Welcome, everyone. This is the board meeting for the Lindmar Community School District and it's being called to order at 5:00. John, will you please determine a quorum?
Director Buckles?
Here.
Director Foss?
Here.
Director Mansour?
Here.
Director Maury?
Here.
Director Thomas?
Here.
Director Walker?
Here.
President Lau Lancaster?
Here. To keep this meeting flowing, I'm going to read each agenda item out loud and ask that you wait until I do that, and then I will ask for a report or a motion. Item number 200, the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
Move to approve, adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Barry and a second by Laura. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. At this time, we were scheduled for a public hearing, but we do not have anyone signed up to speak. Therefore, I closed this public, I opened it and closed it. Do I have to officially open it? Okay, we're going to officially open it. And this is for the open hearing on issuance of bonds for the use in construction and the furnishings of proposed indoor activity center projects. As there is no one here to speak at this meeting, I now determine that this meeting, public hearing is now closed. There. We'll move on to item number 302, the public hearing on the amended certified budget for fiscal year '25. I now open the public hearing on the amended certified budget for fiscal year '25. As no one is signed up to speak to this, to this public hearing, I now close the public hearing. We now move on to item number 400, audience communication. At this time, we typically open our microphones up to hear from our audience and to have open communications. However, we do not have anyone signed up today to speak. Therefore, we will move on to the next item. Item number 500, mission moment. I now open the floor to the board to share some of our district's recent highlights and successes. Would anyone choose to speak? Oh, lots of green lights. Okay, Britt, go for it.
I just wanted to highlight the most recent issue of the Marion Messenger had the Pride and Pack for Spring. Camera, there it is. It's in your mailbox. And I just want to say to Amy that this continues to be a great partnership with Marion Independent and the city, and it really did a nice job of highlighting what's going on in the district. And it's a really nice way of communicating what's going on with those in the community that are not parents. So, well done.
I had the opportunity on Friday to be a table host at the Rotary that I attend for one of our Lindmar students, which was very cool. Mahal Rowanee, and she was being recognized for a Service Above Self Award. And so, just wanted to do a shout out for her. She was wonderful to get to know her and her mom and was really impressed with all the great work that she's doing to support our community.
This weekend, is this loud enough, by the way? Okay, good. This weekend, I had the distinct pleasure of being with several hundred of our middle school students from both Oak Ridge and Excelsior as they went to the Festival of the Bands at Adventureland. Two things, the, both orchestra and band, they, A, they sounded wonderful. They really rehearsed hard and they've worked for that. B, as we were walking through the park, I saw a few kids at times with the Lindmar logos and clothing on, and I would just note that they were exemplary citizens. And so, you know, it's not all, every day that we get to hear such good things about our middle school kids, you know, but without, when, character is what you do when nobody's watching. And I was watching, but they did a great job. And they were really good, really good students and good ambassadors for Lindmar. So, thanks to those kids.
Thank you.
So, I have a couple of things. A couple weeks ago, I forgot to mention it last time, but a couple weeks ago, we had a wonderful cultural fair at the high school, and the Rotary group asked me to let everybody know they're looking for host families for, for an exchange student. So, if we have families in the Lindmar community who would like to host, please reach out to the Rotary group. And then, the second thing I have was I attended the senior recognition night last Monday. And what an amazing group of students we have. Everybody was so respectful and courteous, and I'm so proud of our students. They won so many different awards, not only from the schools and colleges they're going to, from the communities they live in, to just the Lindmar Foundation, the Cedar Rapids Foundation. Kudos to our kids, our students, and good luck to them as they go to their next steps, whatever they are. I was extremely proud of a couple of students who were actually going, not even pursuing like a college degree, but going into the trades, and they're very proud of that. And just, just overall, a wonderful night, a wonderful night that Lindmar hosted. So...
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank the EL, wait, this building's the ELC staff for hosting a wonderful ribbon cutting and tour event. I thought the, there was a constant flow of people coming in, and what I really took away, besides like how coordinated and organized everything was, is how, how many former superintendents, CFOs, board members came and attended. And it really spoke to like that connection to the district, and, I mean, over decades. And that's something that is built over a long period of time, and I think is very meaningful and very valuable. And I am grateful that I get to be a small piece of that history. And I, I look forward to good us continuing that in the future. So, thank you, admin staff.
Anyone else? I do want to piggyback on that. I want to just thank all those former superintendents, former school board members who came along with the community that have been the foundation for a legacy to continue, and I'm grateful. I had the privilege of taking the board-guided tour of our new performance center, and I would say pride, and you just can't help it, but be proud that this district continues to see what's in the best needs of the students for facilities and that, how can we build what they need and build for the future? So, very proud and gratitude all around. So, thank you. Does anybody else have a mission moment?
One more thanks.
Yep.
I want to thank all the community members for their donations for the post-prom. Two weeks ago, we did not have enough, and last meeting, magically, we have enough funds for, for everything for post-prom, so thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to our informational reports in the 600 category. Item number 601, board visit report. This is a visit that we made to Westfield Elementary on May 1st, May Day. Who would like to speak to that?
It was a great visit, and I really enjoyed the kickoff was with the choir, and they sang a thank you song that actually made me tear up a little bit. So, it was really just a nice, they were also excited to show us their songs, and then the choir members were our tour guides, and I had two kids that, they were very, very excited to take me around the building and show me exactly which pieces of art were theirs because the art show was that night. So, as always, our student tour guides do a really good job of showcasing what they love about their school. So, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to speak to the awesome tour guides who kept us unscheduled. Okay, we're going this way, we're going this way. I wanted to meet the librarian, so they were kind enough to detour me over there and introduce me. And all the staff, all the different rooms we went in, since we were each on our own going to different places. I mean, that is a lot of staff and teachers who raised, who opted in to have us visit their classroom. And like, I understand that having somebody just walk into your classroom, or a couple people walk into your classroom can be disruptive, and, but it's so valuable, and I appreciate that opportunity and appreciate their, them welcoming in. Also, we learned the words to the Lindmar school song. There were a couple board members who might have been singing along under their breath. Barry?
We know it. On the dance moves, I guess.
I, so, thank you.
I too want to give my kudos to those that's not only hosted us, but the students who walked around. When I told my daughter-in-law, who is now a brand-new mama of all of two weeks, that we made the visit, she knew the song by heart, shared all the words with me, and I said, yes, I just sang that. It was very lovely. And a kudos to Lindmar, because as she has welcomed a new child into their family, they're looking at what schools they will be going to and what's the best option for their as a family. My daughter-in-law is an audiologist, my son is a lawyer. Thank you, Lindmar. Now, if you could just convince them to move back to Iowa, that'd be lovely. If we have no more mission, or board visit, oh, please, go ahead.
So, I had Hannah and Harper, those, they were my two buddies who showed me around the school. They showed me their artwork, and Hannah likes sports and chapter books, and Harper likes dance and gymnastics. So, their artwork was all about that. So, that was really, really neat. Then I ended up in Mrs. McColl's, she is the, she's the librarian, and, and the students were making circuits, and these were elementary school students, and they were making circuits that, I know that there are STEM fairs that happen with older students, and they do those. So, they were doing the same circuit making on, on cards that like eighth graders and ninth graders do. So, kudos for them for doing that. And then I went to Mrs. Striker's class, and they were learning the oi words. So, boil, toy, just different oi words. And it was very interesting because she was doing it on the computer, on the projector, and the students would hear it, and they had to write it down, and then she would post the spelling. So, it was very cool to see how the students were grasping it. And just, you know, Westfield, after I came home after visiting Westfield, I was, I was like, this is why we send our kids to Lindmar. Just the, like, what, what Mr. Filner had said, how the, the culture of the school, I feel that in every school when, when we go visit. So, kudos to Westfield, amazing was, thank you for hosting us.
Thank you very much for that. If there's nothing further, all right, we're going to move on to item number 602, policy committee report.
Yeah, I'll give that report this evening. So, policy committee last met on May 1st. All the members of that committee from the board were present, along with several of the admin staff. We approved the minutes from the April 3rd meeting. And really, the meat of that meeting was digging into some primers from IASB and thinking through their recommendations and how that aligns with Lindmar's mission and vision, and how it aligns with our other policies as well, and the implications of those. And, and we don't take this lightly, and we determined that we needed more time to discuss these, to take into consideration viewpoints. So, we are waiting to bring those. So, we have no, there are no policy, proposed policy recommendations in today's agenda because we're spending more time with them to make sure we do the best we can with them. Then the next meeting is scheduled for May 22nd. So, again, we're, we're meeting again here very soon so we can continue this work. So, any, any questions?
No, but thank you. You can tell, we're meeting twice a month just to keep the dialogue going and doing our due diligence, but we're not rushing, even though we're meeting more often. So, thank you to the team, because many might not know, but it's a lot of homework. They don't tell you all of that, but it's a lot of homework prior to the two-hour conversations. So, thank you very much for your diligence on that committee. May I move on? I'm going to go to item number 603, our finance audit report.
I'll give a report on that. We had a very good meeting. Most of the items on the agenda, budget amendment, performance venue, bond sale, et cetera, were happening today. Collective bargaining, we'll be touching on that. Auditor-controlled deficiency, meaning through our audit, a couple items that we have to work on and we're handling through that. And then later on, the save revenue bonds. So, everything is in here. A couple of things that we're working through is our 10-year facilities plan, working through the duties of the committee. And then also, and I think it's in here too, we'll see change orders, including the surface for the pre-K playground at Wilkins, and that's in, of course, ADA compliant, and that's in conjunction with the City of Marion. So, those are the main items we talked about. And then we talked about the CTE grant opportunity, and what that means is, the CTE is tech ed. As Midhot mentioned a few minutes ago, there's, there's youngsters, there's kids that want to go into trades, want to go into that. So, Nathan's been working overtime, him and Mark Hutchinson have been working overtime, trying to come up with a curriculum and trying to get grants from the state so that the students don't have to pay for them, et cetera. So, so that's, that's, that's the gist of our whole session.
Did either of the other committee members wish to speak?
I have a question.
Sure.
That 10-year facilities plan, Barry, is, is there, I mean, you guys are talking through it, at some point, will that, do you have an estimated date where that will be finalized? Or like, what's kind of the next couple months look like for that planning?
Well, I would think as we move forward, Jonathan, probably within the next month, we'll have somebody finalized on that, right? Because the plan itself is one thing, but then to have the committee meet, which is, you know, stakeholders outside of this board, outside of the school as well. So, I would think as we move forward, it's going to be real critical, needless to say, as we move forward with the activity center and stuff like that.
Okay.
But no, we don't have a date yet, sorry.
Because I know when we were discussing the proposed indoor activity center, you know, I had some thoughts on that 10-year facilities plan, so I'm very much looking forward to seeing where you guys are with that.
Because, because we're, you know, when you think about it, we're actually finalizing, this is the last step in the past plan, and now we're going to be relooking, relooking through it. And I think a big piece of the 10-year facility plan too is the cost of maintaining all of our buildings moving forward too, so to answer a lot of those questions.
Okay.
So, it really should, we're kind of, the board decided to reestablish the facility advisory committee.
Okay.
Which will kind of be taking a lot of that off the plate of finance audit, and we're just kind of waiting for that committee to get scheduled to meet. But we did write out a summary of, you know, the goals of that group and what we are hoping to accomplish with that committee outside of what finance audit does the finance and can we afford it. Facility advisory is really going to take a look at what are the projects that need done and in the order. So, as soon as that committee starts meeting, we should have some feedback from the board.
Okay. Justin, did you have something?
It should just be, as we think about the 10-year facilities plan, it's not an exhaustive list of everything that's happening. It is more some of the, the larger items, so we know where we're fitting those. Sorry, is this better?
Yes, thank you.
I can hear myself here.
I, your ears are closer than mine.
It should, no, that's fair, that's fair. It is not an exhaustive list. It is not an exhaustive list.
Excellent.
Of, of everything that we're making investments in over the next 10 years. It is instead a, some of the largest items, so we can then think through where some of the other pieces fit in. So, it's just some of the larger things. And then, of course, there's always the, the ability to fit in other things as they, they come up, and it has, it accounts for the ability to have that emergency or that reactive fund as well, so that as we identify things that come up or that we prioritize higher from what was originally considered, we'll have the ability to do that.
And we've already assigned members to that committee or advisory. I don't want to mislabel what it is.
Yes, in November, Midhot, myself, and Justin.
Okay.
Are assigned to that committee.
All right, that's what I thought, but thank you for confirming.
Yep.
That's all.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to 604, Marion City Council Report. Laura, you went to that?
Nothing huge, but one thing that was on the agenda and in the minutes that I wanted to highlight is just an adjacent development. So, the, oh gosh, now I'm under pressure. Low Park, Lau, Lau.
My gosh.
Lau Park.
Lau Park.
Lau Park.
And it's going to be the Preserve at Lau.
I knew I was gonna.
Preserve at Lau Park. I actually have nothing to do with it, but I'm staying on my, in my little house.
Right, but I'm just, they're doing, they're planning for some improvements, for remodeling and expanding and adding a greenhouse. And, you know, that is a, a next-door neighbor, immediately adjacent to some of our sports fields, and so, it's obviously, I think, going to have an impact on, you know, our little community. And, and also, I just want to, like, it looks awesome. And so, thank you, go Team Marion.
Yeah, reach higher. All right, if anyone, do you have anything else for that report? No, you're good?
Nope, that's it.
Guess what? We're going to keep you on the, on the hot mic here, right? We're going to move on to item number 605, legislative report, and that's between both Justin and Laura. Could you give us a report, please?
Sure. Let's see. I am, there's, there's still a lot of things that are hanging in wait-and-see mode. I believe the governor did sign the cellphone, the cellphone bill, and so, we, we were watching that and had enough information to be able to respond so that we are following the law when that goes into effect. But as of when I last checked my media update, I don't think there were any other big takeaways other than it's still in session and we're waiting. Justin, do you have anything to add?
They're in session. Their funding has stopped, so we expect a flurry of activity here from the, from the Capitol in the next days.
Thank you very much. Just a note, yes, the cellphone policy, we will abide by the law that has been signed into effect by our governor, but just a note, every one of our buildings had a cellphone policy, and we will adhere those and make those amendments as necessary. At this time, we have item number 606, our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. District honors and highlights for this board meeting. Fine arts highlight, congratulations to the directors and students that were part of a successful spring musical, Singing in the Rain. I found myself singing the song Good Morning many times after the musical that evening. Lion and volunteer award recipients, we recognized them at the last board meeting, but just a reminder that this coming Wednesday, there'll be awards and a reception for them here in the boardroom, beginning at 5:00, reception at 5:00, and then the presentation at 5:30. A huge thank you goes out to all of our school principals as we recognize them on National School Principals' Day on May 1st. The students, families, and staff are grateful for their dedication to the district and the community. Soda and try honors, congratulations to the Lindmar High School students who participated, and students opposed to drugs and alcohol, or better known as soda, and teens reaching youth try for being recognized by Mayor Nick Abalosili and the Marion East Cedar Rapids Rotary for their leadership and commitment to make a positive impact on our community. Last week, we had a community build highlight. We'd like to say a great job to our, both our Lindmar students and counterparts at Marion, our Marion students that worked hard to complete this year's Marion Community Builds project. Thank you. Also goes out to the City of Marion and for Medco for their support of this partnership. Academic honors, congratulations to all of the Lindmar High School seniors who were recognized during senior recognition night on May 5th. Best wishes are offered to all of the graduating seniors. A couple of other highlights for employee groups, a huge thank you is offered to all of our Lindmar nurses and health assistants for their services as we recognize them on School Nurses' Day on May 7th. And nutrition services, we want to extend a huge thank you also to them. We recognize them on School Lunch Hero Day on May 2nd, and I actually got to help serve some lunch at Wilkins that day with them, so that was wonderful. Just a few other updates from myself. I was honored to help judge part of the high school, the Lindmar High School Art Show. That officially is coming up, I believe, Thursday evening. Let's see, I was able to get to a tennis meet and a track meet, attended some virtual meetings regarding Iowa Department of Ed happenings. Grantwood AEA recently hosted a metro area superintendent's meeting as well. Also, speaking of Team Marion, besides the community build last week, Melissa and Janelle, the superintendent at Marion, organized a crisis committee meeting where both school districts came together with law enforcement, other medical responders to talk about just our safety practices, and we appreciate that partnership, and I know that the city does as well. And we appreciate that partnership, and I know that the city does as well, given that staff will be responding. And it's nice to know that plans are fairly similar and that we continue to work on that to make it maybe potentially bad situation be the best it can be. Let's see, tonight, we had hosted a board tour. Somebody already mentioned that at 4:00 over at the Performance Venue. So several board members, John and myself, were able to go over. It's looking amazing in there. While it looks large on the outside, once you're in the interior, I think it even looks more enormous, but it's coming along. Concrete is not completely poured across the floor yet, but certainly in the area where the chairs start to go up and in the balcony, we're seeing some of that start to happen. Elevator installation is complete, and then we're going to wait until we get closer for substantial completion there. Paintings are starting, particularly down in the back part of the stage area. And then window installation continues for a few more weeks here. Here at this building, we have some parking lot repairs that have just recently been completed. And we're having one final meeting to verify that all punch list items have been completed. And then as we talk about the High School Indoor Activity Center and renovation projects, you'll see that we're talking about the issuance of bonds later for that project here upcoming in the meeting. So some exciting events still to happen yet this May is, of course, prom. Midhot was talking about volunteers with monetary donations, so we appreciate that, putting together something awesome for our kids. And then our seniors' last day is May 21st. Graduation the 25th at 1:00 at Alliant Energy Powerhouse. And then we're coming upon the last days of school on June 4th with a two-hour early dismissal and a teacher workday on the 5th. Any questions?
That's all, does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much for your report. At this time, we will move on to items number 700. This is our unfinished business. We have item number 701, an approval for resolution directing of sale of bonds.
Matt Gillespie is here to review the bids that we opened, or the, I don't know if bids is the right word there, but the bids we opened at 1:30. So each of you has a handout with all of that information that was sitting there, and Matt will run through that.
Thank you very much, welcome, Matt.
I took up too much of your evening. I did have a chance earlier to go through it with John, so I'm comfortable that he's comfortable with the information. Before I go to that, I just want to congratulate the district on this facility. I have been working with the school district for 25 years now, and I do remember school board meetings and bond openings that were not in a building quite like this in the past. So this is a very nice addition to your community. So the packet that you have before you is just detailing the results of today's sale of sales tax revenue bonds. On the first page of it, you should see in the top-left corner, it says "Report of Sale." So in the heading that's right below that, I just want to point out the Standard and Poor's rating of A+. So the rating agency met with your staff about a month ago, similarly last year as well, and assigned the A+ rating. That is, for the most part, about the highest rating that most schools in Iowa are going to get for sales tax bonds. And then today, the bidders had the option that they had, they could choose to use bond insurance, and the winning bidder did use that insurance. So that takes the rating from A+ to AA, which is two notches above that. That's the rating of the insurance company itself, which is Assured Guarantee. So that was something that they chose to do. They take some of the money that they, the fee that they're charging you, and use that money to pay for that insurance premium. But looking at the bids themselves, there were six bids received. That's a good number for sales tax. Many times, we see kind of three to four bids on sales tax issues in Iowa. So receiving six was very good. If you look at the, if you have a color copy, I think, there's a blue-gray number in the winning bid. In the middle of the page, the number's 4.2856. That's the number that we look to to determine who the winning bid is. So that is a weighted average rate, but it's also factoring in the fee, which is called the underwriter's discount that the bidders were charging, and then also if they're paying you a premium or taking a discount. So all of those things are wrapped together in that number. And the lowest of the number is, lowest of the numbers is determining who the winning bid is. So you see there BOK Financial Securities, that's the Bank of Oklahoma, although they bid from Dallas, Texas, which seems odd, but that's the way they do their business. 4.285 versus the next best bid right below that, Bernardi Securities, 4.31. And then the other bidders, you see Robert Baird from Milwaukee, Northland Securities in Minneapolis, TD Securities in New York, and Keybank Capital Markets in Cleveland, Ohio. If you go to the page after that, the top of that page says Sources and Uses of Funds. So this is just looking at just today's bond. So it's not bringing in the bond proceeds from last year or other cash that you're using for this project. It's just the bond today only. And what you see there in the top portion of that page, the sources, the premium amount, $10 million, excuse me, the par amount, principal. And then the way that the winning bidder structured their bid, excuse me. Thank you. They structured their bid to pay a premium of $70,081. So that premium bidding has been very common for the last 10 years because interest rates have been so low for so long. Even though they've risen significantly in the last couple of years, they're still quite low. So a total of $10,070,000 in revenue. And of that, you're setting aside a reserve fund, again, a million dollars. That'll be set aside and sit there until the bonds are fully repaid, basically like a safety net to make sure that the bonds can be paid in case there's ever some kind of type of catastrophic, you know, issue with enrollment or statewide sales tax, which there has not been in the 25 years of there being sales tax, but it is there just in case. You would not set aside a reserve fund, by the way, for general obligation bonds or PEPAL notes. Those are backed by property taxes, so there is, the investors just don't feel that there's a need for a reserve fund. But that is your money, you'll get it back. You're earning, you will earn interest on it, you can spend the interest, and then you'll get the million dollars back once the bonds are paid off. The cost of issuance, $111,287. That's a combination of the professional providers that are helping you with the bond issuance, which include Alors and Cooney, who is your attorney, the bond attorney. Standard and Poor's for the rating, Piper Sandler, the company that I work for, and United Missouri Bank, who is a paying agent and registrar for the bonds. And then the underwriter's discount, the 167,887. That's the number that I said was actually factored into the bid itself. So if that fee is higher or lower, that can help the bidder be more successful in winning, as well as then, of course, the interest rates that they assign as well. And then the big number right in the middle of the page, really probably the most important one that you guys care about, which is how much money do you have to spend? And that is from today's bond alone, just today, $8,790,000. So you'll combine that with last year's sales tax bond proceeds, as well as some other cash and other funding sources that you have to finish up the project that is well underway now. The next page is the Bond Debt Service or the Amortization Schedule. So this just shows you how the repayment will take place. The principal is being repaid out through fiscal year '38. Semi-annual interest payments, annual principal payments, very, very common for most municipal bonds. At the very bottom of most of these pages, there is a note that says that the bonds are callable in June of 2030. So that means that once we get to 2030, that's when the district could, if it's feasible to do it, refinance the bonds. If there's lower interest rates at that time, you could restructure the bonds if that's necessary. And you could also just begin to pay them off in $5,000 increments if you had extra money sitting around and wanted to do that. Or you just leave them outstanding and keep making the payments as scheduled. But until we get to 2030, the bonds will be just fixed the way they are. You cannot pay them off early or make any adjustments to them until 2030. The page after that, the bond pricing, there's some information at the top of that page. But mainly, I just included this for the kind of red box that's in the bottom. I just showed there a few different examples of some other schools in Iowa that have sold sales tax bonds recently and what happened there. So we're comparing the reoffering yield, not the interest rate, which maybe doesn't sound, you know, intuitively the way you'd think about it. But the interest rate is not how we can compare one bond issue to another. It is the actual yield, so what the investor is actually earning. And so there you see, and I just pulled out a few examples, the one-year, six, 10, and 13-year maturity from your issue today, 350 going out to 415. And you see two weeks ago at West Branch and three weeks ago at Sibley-O'Chedin, basically the same rates within a very small window there. So nothing's changed dramatically in the last few weeks. You see three months ago, that was before the talk of tariffs came about, you see the interest rates quite a bit lower, you know, 30-ish basis points lower. And then looking back a year ago at Jessup, quite a bit significantly lower at that time. But that's just the way the market is up, and sometimes it's down. Even though the market rates are higher today than they were three months ago or a year ago, they're still very, very low. Now, they're not where they would have been three years ago. Some of you have been on the board long enough to remember that district issuing bonds at that time. That's when the interest rates were close to .3% to .8%, if you can believe it, versus 3% to 4% that we see today. The next page that is, has the color on it. This is basically combining some of the worksheets that we just looked at. So on the left side of the page, the small boxes, that's just the same sources and uses that we already went through. The left side of the big part of the page is just the amortization schedule. So that's just showing the repayment schedule. But then on the right side of that big box, that's combining, just to the right of the blue line that goes up and down the middle, that's the existing sales tax bonds that you already had. So we're adding today's bond to the existing bonds to come up with the total sales tax bond payments that you have. And then we're comparing that to an estimate of your total incoming revenue from sales tax. Now, this goes out through fiscal year '41, and certainly your revenue is not going to be stagnant. This worksheet makes it appear that it's stagnant at that basically $10.2 million number that's in the second from the right column. That's just because we have to presume that it's stagnant today when we show the attorneys that you didn't overborrow, basically. But the number is going to change, and a district like Lindmar very, very likely will be increasing, just depending on where your certified enrollment is and where statewide sales tax is from year to year in the future. But then the very, very far right column, where that kind of red, I believe, I'm color-blindish, but that reddish square thing, around the numbers 1.25. So when the district has issued debt in the past, sales tax debt, the board has agreed, like most, every school district in Iowa, that you won't issue more sales tax bonds unless we can prove that the payment on those new bonds, plus the payments on all of the bonds that you already have, added together, doesn't exceed this coverage factor of 1.25, meaning you have at least $1.25 in incoming revenue for every dollar that you owe for principal and interest. So we did today intentionally push as much principal as we could into the next two years for a couple of reasons. One, obviously, the faster you pay the debt off, the less interest you pay, so that's a good thing. Also, the faster you pay the debt off, the sooner you can borrow more money, if that becomes necessary, which may, you know, be taking place here in the next year or two with your next project. But then also, we left a hole there. You see, there's no principal structured today between fiscal year '28 and fiscal year '30. That was done intentionally so that if and when you do issue the next sales tax bonds for the upcoming next project, we can push that principal, at least a significant part of that principal, into those first few years to save as much interest as you can, rather than stretching out and maybe hopefully not having to consume 20 years of repayment, for example, where the interest just really begins to accrue significantly. The page after that, which is the last page we're going to talk about, is just the timeline. So we are here at May 12th, taking bids this afternoon at 1:30. Here in a moment, I presume that you will be awarding to the lowest bidder. But at your next meeting on June 9th, you'll just go through the regular legal documents. It's the same process that the board goes through with every type of debt that gets issued. So you'll probably recognize that, but that'll be at the next meeting. And then June 24th is when the transaction will close. So this afternoon, you did receive what's called a good faith deposit. It's very similar to earnest money when you buy a home. So that low bidder wired $100,000 to your bank this afternoon, and then the rest of the money will come to you on June 24th. And then the last part of the packet is just the actual rating report from Standard and Poor's. I wasn't sure if you'd seen a copy of that, so I included it. You can read that later if you want to. It does have some nice things to say about the district. Might also help you fall asleep tonight. So with that, we'll go, I'm going back to the first page. I'll open it up to any questions that the board members have. Once you don't have questions any longer, I'm going to actually paraphrase the resolution, and I'm going to lead you right through that. But before we go to that, any questions that board members have about the process today, the bidding environment? Any questions about the sales tax bonds at all?
We appreciate your work, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt, Justin Foss, I will ask real quick just about the bidding environment. You had shared that it's typical for sales tax bonds to be maybe four, three, four bidders. We saw six. What conclusions do you see just about the overall economy and what you saw with that?
Well, for you to get six bids is not unusual for Lindmar. When I said three to four, that would be for basically any other school, almost, in the state. And I was telling John this this afternoon. You're lucky in that, I don't really know why, but the name, the district name is very well-known in the municipal bond world. Your district, Johnston School District, and a couple others. So you typically get a larger number of bidders. Again, not, there's probably no real good reason because the security is the same as the smallest school district in the state. It's all backed by the same backing. So just the fact that you received six probably had a little bit to do with just the fact that this is Lindmar. As far as the interest rate environment, just be very thankful that you were not selling bonds a month ago, because there were two districts that were selling exactly what you're doing here, except they were 20-year bonds, the week of the tariff, the initial tariff discussion. And unfortunately, although the district, like you tonight, could reject it and just reschedule a sale if you didn't like what happened tonight, they could have done the same thing, but they really couldn't. I mean, legally, they could have, but their projects are already underway. They needed to get the money, so they really couldn't just wait three weeks or three months and hope for better, something better, because they're taking a risk. They didn't know, and we don't know still. We haven't gotten to the point of time yet where if they had rejected, they wouldn't be selling those bonds even yet today. It would still be probably at least a few more weeks. And we don't know what's going to be like a few weeks from now. But the interest rates were 60 to 80 basis points higher than what you see here. So .6 to .8%. So if you got 4%, they got 4.6 to 4.8, for example. And that's a huge difference when you're talking about 10 million, or in one of the district's cases, unfortunately, almost $30 million. So luckily, their bonds are callable, like yours, and the board decided, we need the funds, we really have to kind of just bite the bullet and accept the bid, and we'll hope that we can refinance the bonds, you know, in a few years when their bonds become callable. But since then, it's calmed down significantly. Things have returned not quite to normal. They're still a little bit higher, but this is just the world that we are in. I don't know that rates are going to be lower than this two weeks or two months from now. I'm thankful that they are where they are right now.
One follow-up question to that, thank you, I appreciate it. Do you typically see any Iowa-based organizations bid for stuff like this?
Occasionally, not usually for something that's 10 million. I mean, in the bigger scheme of things, 10 million is not a lot of money, but in Iowa, it's a fairly big bond issuance. We only have a few Iowa-based brokerage firms. There are banks that would bid sometimes, for example, Hills, the bank that the district uses as their bank. They would very commonly bid on something that might be a million-ish. So sometimes when we were doing private placements, which some of the debt that the district has outstanding was privately placed, that's when maybe a local institution might participate. What we don't know, but we really kind of do know, is that those local institutions probably were participating today, but they're not big enough, or they don't, just don't have the desire or the need for 10 million, for example. So they maybe have partnered with one of the bidders that you see on this page. Sometimes they tell us, and sometimes they don't. It's their prerogative to let us know that. It's their own business whether they're, you know, make that public. But it's very common for, and I'm not, I'm picking out Hills, I'm not saying that they were doing this today, but it's just a name that you all know. You know, it would be very common for Hills to call up these brokerage firms because they do business with them also and say, hey, we're interested. because they do business with them also and say, hey, we're interested. We can't do 10 million, but we'd surely buy $2 million of this issue, for example. And that helps the bidders become more aggressive and helps keep the interest rates and/or the fees down as well. But we don't usually see an Iowa-based institution bidding solely by themselves for something of this size. They could, but we just don't usually see that.
I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate you including the information about the rating. And I found it interesting that A+ you said is typical or common for school districts?
Yeah, it's not what I think you should get. I go around and around with the rating agency quite frequently. They don't really like me. But so the rating, the way it works is A+, it's very much like school grades, although I don't know about Lynnmar, but my kids go to Urbendale. They don't get grades anymore, so it's a little bit different system. But when I was in school, you get an A-, an A-, and A+. That's the same way these ratings work. And then it would go to AA-, AA-, AA+. And then AAA. AAA would be the highest, which would be like the federal government. The state of Iowa has AAA rating, but no one else. You should have a higher rating. Every school district in the state of Iowa should have a higher rating, in my personal opinion. There has never been a default on a bond, general obligation bond or a sales tax bond in Iowa ever in the 175-year history of the state of Iowa. So the security of these bonds is very high. But the way that they work, they have a program they plug numbers into, and they compare you to the city of Los Angeles, to the state of Florida. And it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me how it works. So I think you should get a higher rating. But that is the highest rating that we typically see schools in Iowa get.
Well, and I thank you for that context because I hear too, like, oh, AAA, AA, like, those are the big ones. And so somebody might be like, well, why aren't you higher? And so that context is really helpful. And then another thing, and another reason why I appreciate you including this, is this report contain, I mean, S&amp;P is a national agency?
Worldwide. They rate governments and municipalities all around the world.
So some computer or office person, hours and miles and miles away, generated this report.
Correct.
And it puts, but it puts us in context. Like, this has really, pointing out that state projections have total employment growth at 1.5% between 2024 and 2027, trailing the national average of 2.8% during the same period. Like, it puts us in context with that. And then even giving an analysis of their stress scenarios, which you came and spoke to us about, like, oh, you'd have to lose this, you know.
A lot.
And it touches on that in here, too, that it does acknowledge, like, oh, yes, there has been a recent decline. Certified student enrollment has decreased by 13 or 2% that's since fiscal 2021. However, the district is on a long-term increasing trend with enrollment increasing by 8% over the last decade. So it's just, it's so interesting and valuable to have this report that puts us in context, that isn't someone local who might have a bias or anything. It's just, it's numbers and calculations from this worldwide agency, and it's valuable information. So thank you.
Yeah, not to keep talking about that forever, but it is written by someone that doesn't live here.
Yeah.
However, these analysts talk to Iowa school districts every single day.
Sure.
You know, that's their assignment, basically. So they know schools in Iowa and how you operate and how you're financed very, very well, as opposed to other states. They don't necessarily work in those other states. For example, on the front of it, you see one of the, the secondary analyst in this case was Helen Samuelson. She and I have been working together for 25 years. So she's been doing this also for a really long time with Iowa schools. So she knows it very, very well. And some of these people, not the two that are listed on your report, but some of them are Iowans, actually. They don't live here, but they grew up here. Most of them live in Chicago or Denver, so they're very familiar with it.
The data and the context, the long-term context, provides assurance for somebody like me who was like, oh, are we sure? And that's a lot of money, and only A+. So I thought it was worth taking the time to point that out and reiterate the reasonableness of the thing.
Anybody else have, thank you, Laura. That was really good. I appreciate the detail, and I appreciate the way that you've walked us through. Anyone else have a question before we move on to the motion so that we all have clarity?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, Matt, so I appreciate all your work. So you're going to lead us through to approve the resolution.
Yeah, that's right. If there are no other questions, then I am going to just paraphrase the resolution for you. That's acceptable for me to do that. That way you don't have to fumble around and not
Thank you very much.
You're quite sure what you're supposed to say. One of the board members simply needs to so-move what I say. Another board member needs to second the motion. And then, John, you're required to have a roll call vote. So the resolution before you is directing the sale of $10 million of school infrastructure, sales services, and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2025, to BOK Financial Securities of Dallas, Texas.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Laura and a second by Britt. Barry, sorry. At this time, we need a roll call vote, please, John.
Director Buckholz?
Yes.
Director Foss?
Yes.
Director Mansour?
Yes.
Director Maury?
Yes.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
Director Walker?
Yes.
President Lauleyn Castor?
Yes. I believe that means that the motion has carried.
Thank you, Matt.
That's all you needed to do for tonight for this. So congratulations on another successful bond sale. We will be in touch over the next few months, I'm sure, discussing the next phase, presuming that the school board decides to go down that path. If you have questions ever, whether that's tonight, next week, or two years from now, or citizens ask questions about how these things operate and you're not quite sure what the answer is, definitely pass those questions on to John, and he can find me somewhere around the state and get those questions answered for you. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Have a nice drive back. At this time, we will move on to item number 702, the approval of the resolution directing issuance of bonds. Do I have a motion, please?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the resolution regarding the proposed issuance of approximately $31 million in school infrastructure, sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to expand, remodel, repair, improve, furnish, and equip the indoor activity center, including costs of issuance and a debt service reserve fund if required by the purchaser, with any bond proceeds remaining after completion of this project used for other school infrastructure projects as authorized by the school district's revenue purpose statement.
Second.
We have a motion by Britt, a second by Barry. All right, do we have any discussion on this motion?
Katie, the second was by Midhot.
He was right next to it.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I heard Midhot's second.
Yeah.
Either way.
He said it in my ear, sorry. Any discussion? If there is no further discussion, at this time, we have a roll call vote, please.
Director Foss?
Yes.
Director Mansour?
Yes.
Director Maury?
Yes.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
Director Walker?
Yes.
Director Buckholz?
Yes.
President Lauleyn Castor?
Yes. Seeing how that is seven yeses, the motion has carried. At this time, we will move on to item number 703, the approval of fiscal year '25 amended certified budget. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the amended certified budget for fiscal year 2024-25 as presented in Exhibit 703.1.
Second.
We have a motion by Melissa and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion on this motion? If not, I'm going to ask for another roll call vote, please.
Director Mansour?
Yes.
Director Maury?
Yes.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
Director Walker?
Yes.
Director Buckholz?
Yes.
Director Foss?
Yes.
President Lauleyn Castor?
Yes, as there are seven yeses, the motion has carried. We're now going to move on to item number 800, new business. And we'll begin with item number 801, the approval of the resolution. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the resolution adopting the Lynn County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for years 2025 through 2030 as presented in Exhibit 801.1.
Second.
Midhot, you got the second on that one? So we have a motion by Barry and a second by Midhot. Can we have any discussion on this motion? There is, I hear no discussion. We're going to go ahead and go with the vote. This is a unanimous vote, or a yes or no vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number 802, approval of student fees.
Motion to approve the student fee schedule for the 2025 through 2026 school year as presented in Exhibit 802.1.
Second.
A motion by Justin, a second by Melissa. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Thank you to the group that continued to review this. As we think about our students being able to do many things and afford many things, it's good to see that, on one hand, that we're not increasing fees for students to be able to participate in a lot of things. But I'm going to go with the assumption that we still have enough money coming in to keep these programs sustainable. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion? If not, may I have a vote, please? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. We are now to item number 803, approval of fundraising requests.
Motion to approve the fundraising request as presented in Exhibit 803.1.
Second.
I have a motion by Midhot and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will go ahead and go with the vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number 804, approval of open enrollment requests.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the open enrollment requests as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Laura, a second by Britt. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Thank you to Nathan and the team for continuing to work through these. I know it's never easy, and I know that you put in a lot of work for it, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we will go ahead and go for a vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are now to item number 805, the approval of fiscal year '25.
A motion to approve the 2.58% total package increase for the part-time nutrition service staff for fiscal year 2025-26.
Second.
There is a motion by Barry, a second by Midhot. Any discussion, please? Hearing no discussion, we will go ahead and go with the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are now to item number 806, approval of fiscal year '26 transportation. Go ahead.
Motion to approve a 2.57% total package increase for the Transportation Department staff for fiscal year 2025 through 26.
Second.
We have a motion by Justin and a second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will go for a vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number 807, approval of fiscal year LMSA agreement.
Motion to approve the 2.59% total package increase for the Lynnmar Service Association for fiscal year 2025-26.
Second.
I saw that coming. All right, we have a motion by Melissa and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion on this motion? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number 808, again, another approval. Please, is there a motion for this one?
Motion to approve an 8.55% total package increase for the Lynnmar Secretarial and Education Assistant Association for fiscal year 2025-26.
Second.
Ooh, I can tell, we're getting into it now. Britt has a motion on the table, Midhot has second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I just want to comment on the work that's gone into this particular package in elevating our student support associates and our special education staff up to $17 an hour. This is something the board has been working on for quite a while, and I'm really glad to see that that has finally come through. That should also answer any questions as to why it's an 8.55% as opposed to the other ones being lower than that. We're moving the needle on those much-needed positions in our district.
And providing more equity across the board for salaries to represent the work of the positions.
Any further discussion? If not, we're going to go ahead and have a vote on this motion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. At this time, we're going to move on to item number 809.
Motion to approve a 2.57% total package increase for the administrators, managers, exempt, and non-exempt staff for the fiscal year 2025 through 26.
Second.
Got it in. There you go. Just a second, we have a motion by Justin and a second by Laura.
I have to decline. I can't vote on this one.
Thank you. Go ahead and turn your mic off, then. Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Katie?
Yes.
So when we do this, we'll be yes, no, and then abstained is what the order of that will be, and then Barry will abstain.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
All right. If there's no further discussion on this motion, we will have, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Is there anyone abstaining?
I abstain.
Thank you, John. We're now moving to item number 900, the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Laura, you got it in. Is there a second, please? Oh, Midhot, you got the second.
Ooh, and then I will also highlight the retirements in the consent agenda. We have four under certified staff, and we have one under classified staff.
Do you have their names?
Yes, Mark Hutchison, Carrie Jordan McSparren, Carol McNeil, Cindy Nelson, and Judy Suchen.
Suchen.
Suchen?
Yeah, we got it.
I tried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations.
I want to say, too, some of these teachers were very pivotal in my own adult children now who have children, their educations, and I thank them for their time and the way they treated my children. So thank you very, very, very much. There is no other further discussion about our consent agenda. May I have, please, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are now all the way to 1,000. We have item number 1,000, Board Calendar and Communications. I'm going to just highlight some of the ones that are in yellow, and keep your calendars out. Please look for a volunteer for June 19th City Council meeting. We have May 14th, Lynnmar School Counselors Advisory. It is at 4 o'clock, and it is in the College Career Center at the high school. Also, at May 14th, at 5:30, we have the Lions Volunteer Awards. That's in the boardroom, which means here. I'm going to skip down to item number 25, or May 25th, at 1 o'clock,